Welcome everyone. I would like to call the February 5th regular city council meeting to order. Due to inclement weather, last night's regular council meeting was rescheduled to this evening. The council chambers was booked for another meeting tonight, so we are holding our meeting here at Pickering Room at City Hall Northwest. So a few things about this room, it's a little different than council chambers. We do have microphones, but you do have to speak loudly to be heard. Sidebar conversations or conversations in the audience can hurt the quality of the tape, so I ask everybody to not have conversations while we are recording. Usually, we typically do the pledge of allegiance to begin our meetings, however, since we have moved this meeting to an available room where we could have video capabilities, we do not have a flag. And in this venue, we will not be doing our customary practice of starting our meeting by reciting the pledge of allegiance. The first item on our agenda is special business. We were to have ID 0374 Youth Advisory Board presentation. This item has been delayed to an upcoming council meeting. And the next item on our agenda is AB 7710, Council Vacancy for Council Position Number Four. At the January 7th council meeting, we had the opportunity to hear from the five individuals who applied for the council vacancy. Council and I also had the opportunity to speak with the applicants at an informal community meet and greet on January 22nd. Two of the applicants, Rachel Cox and Mary Harris, have since withdrawn from consideration. And tonight, council will have the opportunity to appoint one of the remaining three applicants. However, first, the applicants have been asked to participate in a question and answer session. The process will be, each council member will have the option to pose a question this evening. Each applicant will then get one minute to respond. Names were randomly drawn in advance by the clerk's office to determine the order of response. Applicants will respond to the first question in the following order. Michelle Kemper, Lindsay Walsh, and Catherine Hurt. The first to respond will then rotate, and Lindsay will then respond first to the second question asked, Catherine to the third question asked. So for council members, we will be starting with Council Member Hunt and working our way towards the council president. I ask that each council member read their question to the panelists and then pass a copy over for the clerk and myself to be able to repeat it for who's ever answering second and third. Do you have any questions? Council members, do you have any questions? Council Member Ray.
Since we have such a small, not such small, a smaller group of panelists and time, would it be possible to have a little longer answer period, possibly 90 seconds instead of a minute?
I'm just going to look at the clerk and see if there's any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that, and then allow you to discuss that with your fellow council members.
So long as there's not an objection from the council.
Okay. Council, what are you thinking about if we increase the amount of time for each candidate to answer to 90 seconds, to give them a little more opportunity to hash out some details? Sounds good?
Okay, with it.
Sure.
Seeing all head nods, you'll have 90 seconds to answer the question. Tina will be keeping track, and are you going to give them any sort of warning when they're near the end? Can you give them a 15-second warning perhaps?
I'll do my best to give you a 15-second warning.
Is there anything else, or are there any other questions? Okay. Council Member Hunt.
Great. My question is about affordable housing, which applies to those making 30% to 80% of the King County median income. And my question is, what are your thoughts on the mix of rental and ownership housing, particularly affordable housing in the city? And what can and should the city do? And what are some metrics that we could track as a city related to affordable housing?
Okay. A couple of points on that one, in terms of, not in the sequence that you asked, but in terms of what the city is doing. The TOD, down by Comcast, that location, which is roughly a 50-50 combination of rental and ownership, I think is a good way for the city to do a mix. That is my opinion on how we should be approaching affordable housing in other areas as well. I think when it's a concentrated, heavier percent on affordable, it changes the dynamics of the neighborhood. So I'm warning people, it's closer to a 50-50 combination of ownership and rental.
Thank you, Michelle. Lindsay, would you like me to reread the question?
Sure.
It's about affordable housing, which applies to those making 30% to 80% of the King County median income. What are your thoughts on the mix of rental and ownership housing, particularly affordable housing in the city? What can, should the city do? And what are some metrics that we could track as a city related to affordable housing?
Excellent. So I would agree with Michelle that our TOD project down by the Transit Center is a great way for us to add in a large chunk of affordable housing, much like we did with the YWCA down at the bottom of the Highlands. For that, in general, I very much support ARCH and our contribution to that as a way to get those larger groupings of affordable housing. I also, I think we've done a pretty good job of development agreements in the Highlands and Talis and in other areas, in having an inclusionary zoning piece in it that creates the affordable housing. I think we have to have a mix between the 30% and 80%, and we've maybe done a better job at the top of that without getting to the bottom, which really helps with our retail and other workers that are working in the city that currently can't afford to live there. As far as rental and ownership, I think we need both. I think more of the ownership is going to come maybe from improvements to the condo laws and our ability to get those. As far as metrics, I would look at numbers created both within and without development agreements, and also the number of bedrooms, so that we're making sure that we're getting some for families and not just individuals.
Thank you, Lindsay. Catherine, would you like me to reread the question?
Please.
The question is about affordable housing, which applies to those making 30% to 80% of the King County median income. What are your thoughts on the mix of rental and ownership housing, particularly affordable housing, in the city? What can and should the city do? And what are some metrics that we would track as a city related to affordable housing?
So, not to also just agree and agree, but I do agree with the TOD project, which I learned about really recently, and with the 50-50 model. I also, to focus more on metrics, because I would want to learn more about kind of where we're at and where we want to go. So looking at in rental, number of bedrooms, is this, when rents are increasing by how much, is that something that we can encourage to change? How do we want to look at that in the future? Because I have seen personally, high increases in rent there, and a lot of that is state law, but to just look at where we're at as a city and where we can go in the future. As far as inclusion in development agreements, we have people who want to develop here, and those are good problems to have. And look at the agreements that we form, I think that the city has done a good job of that currently, and to include that going forward.
15 seconds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Council Member Ray.
Well, congratulations, and I'm so excited to have the three of you here this evening. Can you give us an example of where you've had to do or to use, I'm going to use our quotes, "active listening," to help a group work through a difficult situation or a problem?
And we will start with Lindsay.
Well, right now, or for the past five years, I've been a Girl Scout leader for a troop, and that's definitely an area that requires a lot of active listening. Taken my daughter's troop from kindergarten up through fifth grade. And we have had certainly some times, particularly when we have taken trips with the girls, that have created periods where, you know, the girls are having disagreements, and we want to get them together, but we also want to teach them how to work through a problem. So it's not just the adults, Girl Scouts is all about not just the adults leading, but encouraging the girls' growth. And so in those situations, we're sitting with groups of girls that are having a disagreement and not telling them what to do, but rather taking that moment and saying, okay, let's hear from one side, let's hear from the other side. Now, did you hear what they said? And repeating it back. And so I think that's a really good example of taking a situation that maybe you're referring to in the case of adults, and looking back at children and actually teaching them that method as well.
Thank you, Lindsay. Catherine, would you like me to read the question?
No, I think I got it.
Good.
So, as you all know, I'm an attorney. I work with a lot of clients, and so the obvious answer for me is working with clients to assess not only the solution to their problem, but to assess even what their problem is in the first place. And also to work with then, understanding what my client's issue is, and when I'm working with an opposing council, to work with active listening to see what the opposing council's view on the problem is. Because oftentimes, what I see when I'm working through a problem is that both sides haven't defined the problem the same way. So as soon as we can kind of understand how everyone sees the problem, then we can start, that's usually when I'm working in mediation and things like that, that's when we really start to get some traction on progress towards a mutually agreeable settlement or goal. So that's when I am working through a problem here. I like to see what is my definition of the problem? What is my definition of the solution? Can I identify rules, regulations, laws?
15.
Facts to get myself from point A to point B? And the best way that I know how to do that is to listen to people who are much more expert than I am to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Michelle, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm there. As you know, I'm a retired executive in the financial services industry, so active listening takes on a different mantra there when you're the senior officer at the table. Most of the people around the table have to listen to me, so that's another good example. So I'm going to use one from my volunteer roles. One of the volunteer activities that I've done over the years is I'm a advocate for a senior who is moving from a hospital setting to a convalescent setting, to possibly a nursing home or other long-term care, or hopefully back to their home. And when you're listening to the patient, you have to be very careful in understanding senior issues as they're navigating the healthcare issues, their independence. You've got family members at the table who are not only looking at what their role might be changing in terms of their long-term responsibilities for that senior care. You also have the medical professionals who have got rules that they have to abide by in terms of when and how the senior is going to be moved from point A to point B through our medical systems. And then you have money, and you have insurance, and you have long-term care plans. So it's a, the act of listening as the advocate for the senior is not just listening to all the others around them. It's being the advocate for the senior so that their voice is heard.
15 seconds.
And I think the listening skills, when you're listening to someone who has an emotional stake in what's happening in their future, is a different set of listening skills than when you're sitting at the table as a senior officer in a financial services company.
Thank you, Michelle. Council Member Winterstein.
I'm going to pass.
Council Member Goodman.
I was going to pass, too.
Pass, pass? Council Member Batiste.
Okay. As we work through our strategic plan and start to focus on economic vitality, we've been discussing jobs and job growth. What are your thoughts and potential solutions regarding job growth in Issaquah?
We are going to start this time with Catherine.
Actually, I have, I guess, referenced a conversation I had with Council Member Ray. He and I talked about trying to nourish the population of our community that works from home, looking at how can we help support those who work from home to increase our economic vitality in Issaquah with people who are already here. And whether that is looking into supporting WeWork, a WeWork building coming in. If you are unfamiliar with WeWork, it is where if you work from home, you can rent a space or pay to go in and have an office that is a shared office, where lots of different people work in different areas. So looking at that, or supporting others who work from home, but also looking at different businesses who would like to come into Issaquah, I would want to talk to the businesses who have already opened and are successful here. What made them open here? Why do they stay here? What are the things that help them to stay here? And what are the things that are hindrances so that when we are looking to attract additional businesses, we know those things going forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Michelle, would you like me to reread the question?
Yes, please.
As we work through our strategic plan and focus on economic vitality, we have been discussing jobs and job growth. What are your thoughts, solutions regarding job growth?
Thank you. This is probably the number one reason why I threw my hat in the ring for consideration for a council seat. I think that it's a three-pronged approach. I think we've got five major employers, and my hat's off to the city in its support role with our major employer groups. We also have the small to medium-sized companies. I think our focus there with our chamber and with activities in terms of promoting, as they've authored in their 2002 and 2012 update on the economic vitality for the small employer, they've asked for everything from marketing training to internet and social media help in terms of how to get the word out on the small employer. And the role that we have between the council and with our chamber and with our medium-to-small companies, I think would be my number one focus. And then I think the third is today's economic vitality for an employer is something, we don't know what it is. Is it e-commerce? Is it working from home? You know, what is the company of tomorrow? And I think one of the opportunities Issaquah has is to plan for tomorrow and not replicate the brick and mortar that we have in our small-town feel today.
Thank you, Michelle. Lindsay, would you like me to reread the question?
Got it. So as a 15-year business owner myself, I've been through this. I've, you know, had to work through the growth, working from home and figuring out hiring and all of that. I will take a slightly different tact, which is, as a business owner, I understand what the taxes situation is. I'd feel very comfortable with Issaquah's BNO tax rate. What I would like to see is being able to do that application online. I can do that for the state, I can do that for federal, I can't do that for the city. And that's a monthly pain, or a quarterly pain. The other thing I would say is, since we're talking about the strategic plan, we really want to get down to the metrics. So I know we know what our current job numbers are. I'd like to see a little bit more on trends as far as a dashboard on that. What is the growth rate? And particularly, are they coming from these small to medium business, the work from home, or from our larger employers? And thus, that helps set the ideas of how we want to work with each of these in order to pursue that growth. I'd also say, our Chamber of Commerce does an excellent job. They are rearing at the bit to help us out with this. And I would love to see more engagement, more welcoming from the city to bring their ideas in, particularly on the growth idea.
Thank you, Lindsay. Council President Marts.
All right. If you could secure a one-time, $1 million federal grant for the city to be spent on anything, operations or capital, what would you pick?
And I believe this question is starting with Michelle.
Oh my goodness, dangle, $1 million. Kid in the candy store here. I think I would put it on infrastructure. I think it's very important that we have the infrastructure, and by that I mean our police, our safety, first responders, our schools, our parks, the whole structure of what is Issaquah. Once that funding's in place, then with the money left over, I'd like to see something innovative that these small to medium-sized business companies can step forward and look for grant money to help them, whether it's in the arts, the theater, or in bringing in something new and creative that will bring tourism into Issaquah.
Michelle. Lindsay, would you like me to reread the question?
No. Got it. So I think we've heard pretty clearly from our, the citizens of Issaquah, that traffic and congestion is a major, major issue. Most of those projects weigh more than $1 million, so they're not on the table, things like up at Providence Point, putting the light in, things like that, that we know are on our agenda. But what I would like to do is, since it's a $1 million gift, use it for something that you're going to be able to grow further in the future. So much like the test that we did with the Old Town Traffic Calming, which was a low-cost area where we could test things out, see if they work before putting the bigger money in, we know where our problem areas are in the city, and so if we were able to take that $1 million and roll out some tests, whether that was extra crosswalks, or protected bike lanes, or anything like that, that would allow us to gather the data, which often gets pushed off because we don't have the money for that, in order to figure out, is this something that's going to make a dent for a budget that we could put forth from the general fund or something going forward?
Thank you, Lindsay. Catherine.
I was actually going to say something really similar to Lindsay. With a $1 million grant, yeah, you can't do a ton with a $1 million as far as the traffic situation, but you can collect a bunch of data, you can, yeah, put this money into something that we wouldn't otherwise necessarily see the immediate benefit and growth to. So by getting something to, yeah, see something that can grow into a better idea, so that we know exactly, or we know with better confidence, how much something is going to cost. And doing the homework on that, that's what I would want to do it for, seeing, putting in the research, the data, to see how much something's going to cost in the future.
Thank you, Catherine. So we have given each of our council members an opportunity to ask a question. Thank you for your thoughtful questions. Thank you for participating on the panel. And Tina, thank you for your timekeeping. That was awesome. Right now, the council has choices. You can proceed to nominations. You can also decide as a council body to go into executive session and discuss qualifications, and come back to the live session to proceed with nominations. So it's really up to you now what you would like to do next. Any suggestions? Anybody interested in an executive session?
I am.
Is that the will of the body, then? Let's enter executive session?
Let's do that.
Okay. We are going to be entering executive session. Do we need to state an amount of time?
We do.
Should we start with 20 minutes?
20 minutes? Okay, great. 20 minutes? Now, you do remember.
You can't come back early.
We cannot come back early. So you're good with 20?
Do we want to do 15?
You can always extend, but you cannot leave the room early. So 15? Okay, we will proceed into executive session for 15 minutes. So we are back on air. We have returned from the executive session where the council was considering qualifications and discussing qualifications. I may explain a little bit about process before I open it up for nominations. So the process will be, I will open it up for nominations, and we will see which candidates are nominated. When we close the nominations, we will then take a voice vote on all those that were nominated. Do you have any questions?
Nominations do or do not require a second?
They do not.
They do not.
Just for it, so everybody knows.
Good question.
And then you have the opportunity to close the nomination process by vote, or as long as there's no objection on closing the nomination. So you have two routes on closing.
Are there any other questions about the process before we begin? Seeing none, I now open the nominations for, oh, I have one, Council Member Ray. No worries.
So we'll do nominations, we'll close nominations, and then you said we would go into a vote? Is there any kind of deliberations before we vote?
There is discussion before you vote. So there will be an opportunity for those that nominated to provide some information to the rest of the council members on why they chose to do the nomination.
I have a question about the process. I saw a note in there about your view on tiebreaking. Do you want to elaborate that before we start?
Sure. So in the event of a tie, there are several options that the council has to consider. One is to go back into executive session and talk to each other again for 15 minutes. Another would be for them to, I'm going to use the wrong word, move it forward.
Postpone or continue.
Postpone or continue to a date certain, which would allow you more opportunity to engage with the different applicants. And the third option is that the mayor can break a tie. So I'm going to strongly encourage you to do one and two. I think that we have really good candidates, and I think you've had the opportunity to touch base with them and talk with them, and should be able to select one of the three for the decision. Good question. Any other questions about process before we open it up for nominations?
I'm sorry.
Council President Marts.
I just, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I just, I read it, I read it here, in the event of an initial tie vote, Mayor Polly has opted to temporarily waive her right to break the tie, so in a first vote.
That's going to those two other options, which is, I'll encourage you to go into executive session, and I will also ask you to consider whether or not you would like to postpone.
That's what that means. Okay. I just wanted to.
No, that's good. That's said a different way, so thank you for asking that. Any other questions on process? Okay. I know they're excited, so here we go. I now open the nominations for Council Position Number Four. Council Member Winterstein.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Kemper.
You? Are there any other nominations? Council Member Hunt.
Nominate Lindsay Walsh.
You? Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing nominations for Council Position Number Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Council discussion. So before we vote on the first nominee, is there any discussion? And Council Member Winterstein, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I have prepared remarks. Always extremely grateful for anybody who steps forward and says, I'd like to serve the public in this way. We all know it's not, you know, it's a difficult job, very demanding. It's also an opportunity that comes around on a pretty regular basis, and there are different routes on which to get here, and I know you're all very well-versed in that. My nomination of Michelle is an expression and a belief that what you represent and what you would mean to this council and the city, I think best meets what I believe is necessary. And at the same time, and in no way, it's not an expression at all about my perception of the qualifications for either of you. I'll say it, and you'll probably hear it again tonight as well, that all of you possess, Lindsay and Katie as well, the capability, the tools, the potential, the kind of things that I know could serve this city well on this council, and serve our citizens, and work with the rest of us. There's no doubt in my mind. But I nominated Michelle principally because of the, and I used a word earlier, I'm going to use a different word, but I look up at the makeup of this council, our strengths, our backgrounds, what we bring together, how we work. And I truly believe in a marketplace, a way in which issues are thought of, discussed, and decided upon in a group. And new perspectives that are well-represented, that bring an experience and a perspective to such a dialogue, enriches the conversation and generally leads to better conclusions. And it's my assessment that Michelle, you know, with your particular traits and work experience and where you did that work, is, will be of benefit to the council and the city.
Thank you, Council Member Winterstein. Council Member Hunt, would you like to have some time for discussion?
Yes. So a year ago, I went through this process, and I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you so much for all sticking with it and for participating, and we're in a good position today that we have several good choices. And so I appreciate that it is a difficult, or sometimes a challenging, process, and thank you all very much. So I am nominating Lindsay this evening because I think that, first of all, she has shown a tenacity and a or sometimes a challenging process and thank you all very much. So, I am nominating Lindsey this evening because I think that, first of all, she has shown a tenacity and a stick-to-itiveness. This is her second time through the process and she's come forward with new ideas and new perspectives. And I think that she brings, although she is very familiar with the issues, she also brings a new perspective on those issues. And then, I also really value the long-term commitment that I think she's shown through planning policy as well as this being the second time applying for council. And then also, I think on a number of issues, Lindsey brings a different perspective and something for us to consider. And I think that this is especially valuable for council because these new ideas, I think, are, whether or not I agree with them, they give us the ability to formulate why we don't agree or why we agree. So, I think that the generation of creative options for the council to consider is another reason why I have valued Lindsey's input from planning policy and why I'm nominating her.
Thank you. And now, we'll open it up to any other council members who would like to add comments to this discussion. Council President Martsch.
So, by my tally, this is my fifth time doing this. And I will say, and I hope it doesn't sound like a cliche, this is the most difficult appointment that I have been involved in. Any of the three, first of all, each of the three of you has shown to be the strongest in differing areas of aspects that would be valuable on the council. And so, any of the three of you would be a joy to work with. And that's why this is so hard. Because at the end of the day, we have to pick one and not the other two. So, I will say the thing that, I will then say the thing I have said before, which is run for office if you don't get appointed. The deadline for filing is less than four and a half months away. There will be three council seats up for, three or four?
Four.
Four. So, you know, whoever doesn't get it, I hope to see again. I will say that I am also supporting the nomination of Michelle in this case. I feel that her executive experience has shown through in her responses and she would bring a skill set that I don't think is represented on council at present as it could be. And so, while the other two candidates are great, that's where my, that's where I'm going to start off with this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion before we go to the vote? And I will explain the process of voting. Councilmember Goodman?
As will be said several times tonight, I mean, we just can't go wrong. The community can't go wrong because you all are just equally qualified in so many different ways. And so, I'm just thrilled that all of you are here and that all of you applied. And so, it is really a tough decision. My decision really is based upon much of what Councilmember Hunt said. And that is that, not that either one of you, Catherine or Michelle, wouldn't do a great job, you just would. But Lindsey has worked, in my opinion, very hard for, to be on council. And I have every reason to believe that she'll make a fine council member and have not been convinced that she shouldn't be afforded that opportunity based on the work that she's done over the past few years to get here. That's the sole reason. But, you know, like Tola said, whoever doesn't get it tonight, I hope you stay involved because you're all very, very valuable and thank you again for applying.
Any other discussion?
Might I do first? This is really hard and I can say with great honesty is I don't have any idea where I'm going. And I'm going to, these are notes I made that we talked about just moments ago. And I think all three of you are marvelous in completely different ways. You know, Catherine and I, or Katie the other time I talked to you. You are massively creative and you bring a fresh perspective to problem solving that I completely admire. And Lindsey, your grasp of the issues is incredible. And Michelle, your poise and your competence and your background, you know, make you an excellent candidate. So, I am completely, you know, game day decision on this one. So, and it's halftime.
Councilmember Patisse?
So, first of all, I just wanted to start out by thanking each of you for coming forward and all the work that goes into the appointment process. I've sat in your seat before and it's a bit nerve-wracking. And I wanted to echo what you've heard this evening is that all three of you would do an amazing job on council. And so, this is an incredibly tough decision. You all have these great strengths in different areas and that makes the decision all the harder. Tonight, I'm going to be supporting Lindsey for the position. I think Lindsey has really shown so much work with the PCC. I've seen her at many, many council meetings. I just appreciate her tenacity, but also just a fresh perspective and a really deep understanding of the issues. I had the opportunity to have conversations with each of you and just got so much out of it. And I, again, want to thank you for your time. And I hope that as we go forward, if one of you are not the person chosen, that you really will stay involved and run for election or find a way within the city that you can, that you can give back because you all have so much to offer.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion before we go to the vote? Okay. Before I go through the process, I just wanted to let you know that five of the seven electants up here have all gone through the process and only three were picked through this process. Two had to run for office to get the seat. So, it seems unusual that we have repeated this in the last few years, but I appreciate your courage and your bravery and your confidence to put your hat in the ring. Thank you very much for doing this. So, the process. Each council member has one vote to cast for the nominee of their choice. The votes will be taken by a show of hands and the first nominee to receive four votes will be appointed. I will call the vote in order of the nomination.
We can have voice and show of hands, please?
Voice and show of hands. Did I not read that right? Okay. Voice and show of hands. So, all those in favor of appointing Michelle Kemper signify by saying aye and a show of hands.
Aye.
Three? All those in favor of Lindsey Walsh signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Council is tied. So, now you have some considerations. If you feel that you can break the tie by additional discussion right now on camera, you can. If you would like to recess into executive session, you can. And if somebody would like to make a case for postponement to a future date, you can do that. So, let's step through the options. Is there a general sense that additional discussion tonight on camera will get you to a different vote? Not seeing it. Councilmember Winterstein? More discussion on camera?
I would, you know, last time we did this, we got to the same point. Actually, there wasn't somebody with four. And I, my vote was in the minority. And I decided, I knew that there was, you know, I could easily think that we're doing the right thing for the city by switching my vote and we went right through it really, really quick. So, I say that just to remind all of us that are here that it's possible. And you can see that, that's possible when the situation arises. In this particular case, and I agree with my colleagues that Lindsey would be an excellent councilperson as well. And yet, this evening, I'm remaining firm at this point with my vote. So, I don't have, I'm not going to switch and flip the vote like I did last time.
Councilmember Ray?
I wonder if we might spend 15 minutes in executive session to?
I'll agree. I agree.
Through some of this.
Okay. Boy, you guys are making a test. Okay. We will recess into executive session for 15 minutes.
Done it all. That's all you need, one time.
Thank you. So, we are back from our second executive session and I'm just going to give a little summary of where we are in the process. The council elected to go into executive session to consider qualifications after the first vote this evening resulted in no candidate receiving four votes. At this point in the process, the council could, somebody could consider a motion to, give me the right word, Tina? To?
Revote on the nominees.
Revote on the nominees or continue. So, those are the two options you have left. So, I need to get a general sense from the council if anybody would like to motion. Otherwise, I will recall for the votes on the two nominees. I mean, I will.
Call them again.
Call the vote again on the two nominees we have. Councilmember Winterstein?
Continue means what again? I thought we had.
You would be pausing this process to allow for additional discussion with the candidates and pushing the vote to another date.
And we still have other options available to us.
We can, we can go tie vote and we can cycle through again and again. So, if there is no motion, then I will call for the, all those in favor of the first nominee and we'll repeat the process we did before. All those in favor of appointing Michelle Kemper signify by saying aye and a show of hands.
Aye.
That's three. All those in favor of Lindsey Walsh signify by saying aye and a show of hands.
Aye.
Okay. Three. We're tied. So, at this point, you have the same options you had before. You can continue discussion on camera. You can go to executive session. You can move to continue or the mayor can choose to break the tie. By Council President Martsch.
I would move to continue to the next council meeting to allow further discussion with the two remaining candidates by the city council members.
Do we need a second? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the discussion. Council discussion on the motion?
As the maker of the motion, I think we all have ample evidence that we have strong candidates here tonight. And I think that I have a hope that each, the candidate, the two candidates who have gotten to this point have shown ample interest in communicating with us and communicating their vision. And we have talked to and they've referenced their conversations with us in their answers. And my hope is that by spending some more time, we could get a little further clarity. I have said that all these candidates are good. So, I'm not, I'm not hard over. And I also would prefer not to put the mayor in the position to be a tiebreaker. So, that's why I would like to go this direction.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
I am not going to support this motion. I would like to see this concluded this evening and feel that as an elected representative of the people, I would ask the mayor to cast her vote. And I think that would be fair. So, if this doesn't pass, I'm going to make, I'm going to move in that direction.
Discussion?
I don't support the motion either. I think we, we've already had a process that's lengthier than any other process that we've had. And I think to delay it anymore is not necessary. I mean, we all know we have great, we have great applicants and, but I don't see any need to delay it any further. We can break a tie one way or the other.
Discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
I am persuaded, I think, by my fellow council members, Councilmember Winterstein and Goodman. I think this is a challenging process and I recall sitting in the chair and thinking that, you know, a decision was going to be made. And so, I would like to see, I would like to see a decision made this evening.
Any other discussion? Deputy Counsel President Patisse?
So, I very much appreciate the motion on the table and can understand the reasoning behind that. But on the flip side, having sat in the seat and gone through the appointment process and this particular process has given us some additional time with the candidates in some different ways. So, my concern would be that we take more time and may still be where we're at. So, I think that I would like to see us move forward.
Madam Mayor, I withdraw my motion.
Second degree?
No.
Okay. Keep it on the table. It's a lot of parliamentary procedure you're all learning tonight. Councilmember Ray?
So, I appreciate the difficult situation that you're in and, you know, waiting another two weeks to make a decision. This must be quite frustrating and agonizing. But I don't believe it is. If we don't, if we continue on the path we are in, then to Councilmember Winterstein's point, it will fall to the mayor to break the tie. And I believe it is this body, not, that is, the city council's responsibility to fill this vacancy, not the mayor's responsibility to fill this vacancy. And I would like us to, I would like us, the council, to give a little more effort into getting ourselves in a place where we can do our response, our job, which is to fill this vacancy and not ask, not hunt and ask the mayor to make our decision for us. So, that is why I really would like to not withdraw the motion and I really would like to continue this despite the difficulties that I know are associated with it.
Is there additional discussion? Have a question for the clerk. Does the motion need to contain a date?
I believe Councilmember Martsch indicated next.
Oh, it did say next meeting? Okay. I missed that. So, can you read me the motion back?
It would be to continue consideration of the nominees at the council meeting of February 19th.
So, it's been moved and seconded to consider, to continue consideration of the nominees at the February 19th council meeting?
18th.
Oh, 18th, sorry. 18th.
Tuesday the 19th.
Tuesday the 19th. 19th.
Tina, you just, sorry.
All those in favor to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Raise your hands. Opposed? The motion fails, four to two. You do have the option to continue to discuss qualifications. You do have the option to take another vote. What is your desire? Councilmember Winterstein?
So, you didn't list the option of the mayor breaking the tie. So, is there a procedural step that we have to do to make that informal?
So, does the government, does the council body have an option on the table that says, "We, the body, choose to have the mayor break the tie"?
Actually, it's the ability of the mayor to take, break a tie is in your power. And in my view, you would have to take another vote. Right now, the votes have been counted on both of the candidates on the last vote. You've had an intervening motion to continue, which has failed. You should, if the mayor is going to break a tie, there should be another vote on the candidates, assuming that that, if that vote were to result in a tie, then it would be fault to you, mayor, to make your decision as to whether you would break the tie.
Deputy Counsel President Patisse? So, I, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up, but I'm thinking about what Councilmember Ray just spoke to. And before we would go forward with the mayor breaking the tie, I may want us to try a little more time this evening with the council.
In executive session?
Yes.
Thoughts? Councilmember Winterstein?
Well, since that was expressed, I would want, I would, my first reaction is to want to honor that, honor that request. It's not my first choice and all because I think in rebuttal to what Chris said earlier, I don't feel at all that this council is not doing what it's charged to do. The fact is, it's, there's only six of us.
The fact is, it's, there's only six of us and, and, and that is okay. I also feel, like I said earlier, and this would be an encouragement to do that, as an elected representative of the people who has real care and concern about the outcome and, and what's good for the city, I think that our mayor has demonstrated, you know, kind of thoughtful deliberation about the options as well, though she hasn't shared that with us, I think that that would be a fair outcome for the citizens if it went that route. I'm not trying to put anybody in a spot. I think it's just trying to do what's best.
Thoughts? By councilmember Goodman, council president Mertz?
I'm, I just want to say that I am certainly not opposed to the mayor breaking the tie. As Paul said, there's six of us and I think in, there would, it would be anticipated on almost any agenda bill that comes before us, including the decision to appoint someone to fill the vacancy, that there could be a three-three and that's why we have that procedure in place and I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Council president Mertz?
I support the motion to go into executive session for further discussion. It isn't the end of the world if the mayor has to be the tiebreaker, but I would love to take at least one more stab at having a qualifications conversation before we put the mayor in that position.
So, it looks like the general consensus is that we will go back into executive session for 15 minutes.
Ten.
Ten minutes. Head nods?
Yeah.
Ten. Okay, we're out. So, we are back from our executive session to discuss candidate qualifications and we are doing Groundhog Day here and going back to the part of our process where we will be, you will be voting on the two nominees and I will list them in the order that they were nominated. All those in favor of appointing Michelle Kemper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's three. All those in favor of appointing Lindsay Walsh, say aye.
Aye.
Three to three. So, at this point in time...
Can we do that vote again? Can we re-vote?
Yes, because nobody's gotten four votes yet, correct? We have some options right now.
Choosing not to break the tie at this moment?
He's asking if they can do a revote and so I would say that that is an option for them to do a revote. So, since no candidate has received four votes, we will redo the voting. I will call out the names of the nominees in the order they are nominated. All those in favor of appointing Michelle Kemper, say aye.
Aye.
That's two. All those in favor of appointing Lindsay Walsh, say aye.
Aye.
That's four votes. Congratulations to both of you. I would like to call Lindsay Walsh forward for the oath of office.
There, where?
What is up there, Judge Becker?
Um, we've got a little bit more room, but... Mary Lou Polly, having been duly appointed...
Oh, sorry. No. Not me. Hold on, it's not me.
See after me. I'm Lindsay Walsh.
I'm Lindsay Walsh.
Having been duly appointed to the office...
Having been duly appointed to the office.
Of City of Issaquah Council Position Number Four.
Of City of Issaquah Council Position Number Four.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law...
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain...
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington...
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations. We are going to have, oh, congratulations. We'll be seeing you after the break and we're going to have a five-minute recess. We are back from our short five-minute break and welcome. Councilmember Walsh gets to join the council this evening and is seated with us. The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments. This is when audience members may address the council. The guidelines for public participation are not displayed on the screen, but I can read them if necessary. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Those who signed up will be called forward first. If you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. And if you are here as part of a group, please identify yourself as a spokesperson for the group and if you are in the audience this evening and want to indicate your support for comments you're hearing during audience comments, please raise your hand. Tina, has anyone signed up for this evening?
None.
Are there any members of the public who would like to address the council during audience comments? Seeing none, audience comments are closed and we'll move to the committee and regional reports. And we will skip councilmember Walsh and move to councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January 23rd, I attended a special meeting for the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. The meeting was part of the ongoing discussions that KCD is having around a proposal to increase their parcel, per parcel fee, which is the main funding mechanism of the King Conservation District. And this discussion was particular to the jurisdiction grants, which Issaquah has partaken in before, so it is relevant to us. And they, the discussion was around how to achieve their goals around these grants, which is to fund creative and innovative conservation and whether to increase that rate proportionally as they're increasing their per parcel fee or to keep that static and to allocate funds elsewhere. And then also the land and shore meeting will meet February 7th at 6:30 in council chambers. And we have four items. They are AB 7681 Polygon Parcel D Preliminary Platte Issaquah Highlands Quasi Judicial. Close record. AB 7682 Proposed Amendments 2018 Comprehensive Plan Central Issaquah Plan IMC Central Standards. AB 7683 Amendments to IMC 18.07.480 Community Facility Standards Regarding Public Buildings and AB 7726 2019 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
The Services and Safety Committee will be meeting on February 12th at 6:30 PM in council chambers. Likely agenda items include AB 7702 Amending IMC 9.05 Criminal Code to align better with state statute and AB 7723 Amending IMC 2.20.040 Changing Cemetery, Cemetery Fee Increases. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. The next meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board is this Thursday, two days from now, on the 7th of February. And the issues of, the bulk of the issues on the agenda, again, pertain to the development of Vision 2050 and we are, there's no action involved. We will have a number of discussion and breakout sessions around the general topics of equity, housing, and the implementation and accountability sections within Vision. All of these have basis in the current Vision 2040 and what happens is the staff and there's been quite a bit, they've had quite a few, you know, public touches over the last year. They bring together that information, their, and their own kind of technical expertise. They present kind of how equity exists, may be represented in the current form of Vision and then discuss alternatives on, their recommendations on how it may be expanded or updated in the next Vision. And then we just talk about them as a policy board and it will be, in the future, all of these will come back with kind of a formal recommendation from the staff. So, we're still kind of continuing with discussion about these very aspects of Vision. That is Thursday. And then, on the 21st of February, we have planned, I am going to be chairing the council infrastructure committee meeting. Lindsay, look forward to seeing you on that along with Stacy's and other member, I believe. That's right. And there, it's on the calendar that we're going to have a meeting on Thursday, the 21st of February. The agenda has not yet been set. There's nothing in this packet that would move something there. Though Director Lynn and I are, Lynn are going to have a conversation next week and if indeed there's going to be a meeting, we have an agenda item, then we'll, we'll go through the formal channels. But this, at this point, I do not know what an agenda would be. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will meet on February 14th at 4:00 PM at headquarters on Newport Way and the agenda has not yet been set. That's my report.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Patisse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow on February 6th, the PSRC Economic Development District Board will meet and will be discussing the global trade and supply chain management economic sector analysis that is expected to be released in 2019 in addition to the Washington State Global Health Landscape Study, which was released December of 2018. That is something that speaks to Washington-based organizations working in global health. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow on February 6th, the PSRC Economic Development District Board will meet and will be discussing the global trade and supply chain management economic sector analysis that is expected to be released in 2019 in addition to the Washington State Global Health Landscape Study, which was released December of 2018. That is something that speaks to Washington-based organizations working in global health. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is actually going to skip the February meeting because people are off at, what is it, National Association of Cities. So, the next meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 13th at 7:00 AM in Renton City Hall. The agenda, of course, has not been developed yet. King County Growth Management Policy Council, GMPC, will meet Wednesday, February 27th at 4:00 PM in PSRC Chambers downtown. On the agenda, the full agenda has not been defined, but it will at least include the new housing committee composition and work plan per the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendation as well as an update on Vision 2050. So, to see what our friends over at GMPB are doing. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving to the mayor's report, the short report for this evening, executive session. There will be another executive session held this evening to discuss pending potential litigation for RCW 42.30.110 PRN 1 PRNI. This item is expected to last 30 minutes. Action will not follow in open session. Proceeding to the consent calendar, the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
We have.
Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Can I have a motion to approve the calendar?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar. It's listed in this evening's published agenda.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is under regular business, AB 7715 Front Street Streetscape Phase One Project. This is coming out of the Infrastructure Committee and I'd like to invite Public Works Director Sheldon Lynn to make a presentation.
As you mentioned, it's AB 7715, was referred to the Infrastructure Committee and is now coming back from committee. In committee, they had a brief presentation about what the project entailed and the request for providing a revenue source was brought back to the full council from the committee and put on regular business this evening. So, as a reminder, this agenda bill is requesting council's consideration to provide a revenue source to support the adopted 2019 expenditure for the streetscape improvements along Front Street. In my presentation, I'll give a short project description, its history, followed by alternatives to address the revenue need. The project itself entails the area within the box in purple. It entails the installation of five street trees, irrigation, movable planters with seating, some, a couple of decorative screenings, some benches, trash recycling receptacles and bicycle racks. This is the, a smaller scale or piece of a larger project called the Front Street Streetscape Project. In 2016 and part of 2017, the Economic Development Department publicly engaged the downtown businesses and community to plan what Front Street Streetscape would look like. The plan, the project plan was adopted via an agenda bill in April of 2017 by the city council and then again included as one of the projects in the 2018 to 2022 CIP. What is proposed contains the same elements and is part of the larger adopted project. The funding history of this project, once it was adopted in the 2018 to 2022 CIP, the revenue source at that time was identified to be debt service. It was a larger project. However, in 2018, the council put in 2018 budget about $156,000 to do a phase one, essentially what I was describing earlier in this presentation. However, in 2018, the revenue source was still supposed to be a larger, part of a larger debt issuance associated with other projects so that we weren't, so the city wasn't issuing a small debt issuance for this project. No debt issuance occurred in 2018, of which this project would have been incorporated with yet. In 2019, the council again adopted budget with this $156,000 in it, but did not identify a revenue source other than what was in the CIP, which the CIP continues to say that it is a debt issuance. Administration does not recommend using debt service for this small amount of projects. Funding alternatives are using the fund balance of the general fund or the council could delay the project and include in the funding discussion for currently unfunded projects, which the Finance Ad-Hoc Committee is currently in discussion over, or it could use a combination of the tree mitigation fund and, and the fund balance in the general fund. All three of these are options that the council has. The administration's recommendation is to use the fund balance. If there's any questions, I'd like to...
Thank you, Sheldon. Questions? Councilmember Hunt, followed by councilmember Walsh.
So, my first question is about the, the locations of the different furniture and in particular the different screen and bench. So, I know that some of the businesses on the street have changed since the streetscape was adopted and so I wondered if those locations are set or if they're still being determined, being worked out with the businesses that are there.
I don't know the exact locations of all the street furniture. The screens are shown in little circles. The purpose of the screening is to screen the diagonal parking that is off the street from the people that are actually on the street walking around. So, there's an actual performance need for those from an aesthetic perspective and end-user perspective, so the screen locations would be set.
And then, this is for part of the street, but is the idea to use screens on other parts of the street as the, as the street enters the next phase of the streetscape?
We just evaluated this area and have been in company, in conversation with businesses and so forth as we were selecting street furniture and things of that sort.
And then I, I did have a follow-up question, which we discussed a little bit at, at the council infrastructure committee meeting, but I, I'm still a little bit unclear and I got a, there was a letter from the Downtown Issaquah Association that sort of added to the discussion. So, I wondered if we could get some more information about what the businesses that are directly adjacent to, in particular the screens and in particular the one that is indicated there is a restaurant, because I know that there's a side business there which will be locked by the screen.
So, Christopher from Economic Development has been in conversation with businesses.
Hi, my name is Christopher Wright and I'm with the city's Economic Development Department. With regard to the discussions we've had with those adjacent businesses, we've talked... With regard to the discussions we've had with those adjacent businesses, we've talked to Alice Folly, who is the new tenant of the crawl bar space, and we've also talked to Edward Jones' tenant and the building owner of that building as well. The concerns that they both expressed were similar, in that they wanted to make sure that the screens that are installed can be seen through, you know, a certain amount of visibility through them. For different reasons, Alice Folly is concerned about their business being blocked, whereas Edward Jones, they're more concerned about security, and that's why they want to be able to see through it. So that, and they wanted to make sure that the walkways are maintained adjacent to the buildings. So I think if you look at the original streetscape plan, the screens were going right up to the walls, but we want to make sure that we agree that there should be the walkways maintained next to the wall. So those were the couple of concerns that they had, and we've told them that we're going to continue as the screen selection process goes through, through the Arts Commission. We're going to continue to ask for their input during the selection process for the design of the walls.
Okay. So I do hear that they had concerns, and so were those, and I didn't also get a sense that those concerns were ultimately resolved, but it is an ongoing discussion. So were they, is the tone that they are thinking that there's a way to resolve those concerns, or the concerns are?
Yeah, I can't totally speak for them, but I do know that, again, Edward Jones especially, you know, they're more optimistic that we're going to be able to work through the design process. And like I said, Alice Folly too, I'd say maybe they're skeptical, but they're certainly willing to work with us on that, as we narrow down the design.
And Councilmember Hunt, I can come back to you and let Councilmember Walsh ask a question, because it looks like you have some more.
I do have one more. So this, this is about the tree mitigation fund option specifically. So the tree mitigation fund, we had a comment in an email from Connie Marsh, and she was asking about whether the city had paid into the tree fund when they removed the trees as part of, or if this would be taken from the tree mitigation fund after removing trees without paying into the fund, and so I wanted to ask that question.
I don't recall whether or not the city paid into the fund as a result of taking the trees off of Front Street. The municipal code 18.12.180, specifically titled City Tree Fund, provides for the city to be able to use the money for multiple purposes. One is to defray the cost of enforcing the tree regulations, acquire, maintain, and preserve wooded areas, to plant and maintain trees on publicly owned property, which city streets are, and provide urban forestry education. So the code provides for the ability to use tree fund money on this project for planting trees.
Okay. But was, I guess was part of the original plan to replace the trees with?
Part of the original plan was to replace trees, but there was no money available except for the fund balance.
And then, my last question is, at the council infrastructure meeting, we had a discussion that Downtown ISCO Association was going to be able to do the watering, and then I received a letter, which gave me the impression that that is a possibility, but not, not definitive. And so I wanted to revisit that, because I want to know if there is a plan for maintenance that, if that does not end up being possible for them, or something that they would want to do.
Yeah. DIA has been maintaining and watering the existing pots that are out there between Sunset and Alder, and so this isn't a new thing, a new program for them. They've already been doing it. What Christina Bruning, who's the president of DIA, what neither she nor I could find, though, was any kind of formal written agreement between the city and DIA that they do that. So we agree that now is a perfect time to formalize that, and we don't see any problems with that, but we acknowledge we should formalize the agreement to maintain and water.
Okay. So is there, so is there a plan in case that they, with the city staff, water them in case they aren't able to?
Well, there's basically three options. One would be DIA. The second would be the business owners that have the planters in front of their business, and then third would be the Parks Department. And so, like I said, I'm not anticipating that we would have to go to the second or third options.
Okay. And just, just so I can read to the record what I'm referring to, this is in the letter from Christina Bruning, and it says, "It may be reasonable for DIA to partner in watering the planters, however how this is managed and the source of funding are not finalized, and MOU responsibilities will be necessary to ensure clear understanding and to manage expectations." And that's excerpt. So it would, I would like to have that, I guess, taken into consideration as we consider how to maintain the streetscape.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, your first question.
Thank you. I have a few. First of all, I haven't seen Connie's letter or DIA. I'm not sure if anybody has any printed copies. Okay.
We're a little bit of a lost tonight in our new home room.
Yes, indeed. Secondarily, I know that since the $156,370, I seem to remember seeing that number back when it was first considered by PPC and then in the CIP adoption in 2017. Has that number increased since it was originally adopted to account for an increase in construction costs, or whatever that would be in that interim time?
The $156,370 wasn't shown as a pulled-out cost in the CIP, because the CIP was well over $1 million at the time in 2000, I believe it was 2018, when the council wanted to fund, you know, at least getting the trees and some other streetscape in place. An estimate was given in 2018 for the $156,370. Based upon the engineer's estimate, we think that we can get this Phase One done for the $156,370, what we've talked about tonight.
Okay. And then, I did look up the, the City Tree Fund Code piece, and I agree that it seems to imply that, or seems to state that you'd be able to add in trees on city areas. I was wondering whether there was any opinion on whether that suggested that these should be a net new growth of trees, or whether replacement seems to be an acceptable use in that situation.
City Administrator Moon?
It's city attorney's opinion and administration's opinion that the tree fund can be used for this purpose.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Related to that question, remind me how the tree mitigation fund gets funded?
The tree mitigation fund is funded.
Is it an impact fee?
It's not an impact fee. I would have to go back and read the section of the code, and I don't believe I have that.
Yeah, one second, Sheldon. Council, City Administrator Moon?
In essence, or very briefly, developer, if they can't meet the requirements for tree retention, has potential opportunity to pay into the tree fund. If they're not able to, then replant the amount that would be required by our tree retention ordinance. Have an option of paying into the tree fund so that, so that on a different site, trees can be planted.
And also when there's violations.
Yes.
When there's, right.
There's the.
Violations, that's right.
And I would point out, before we get to a motion, that there are two motions available. So there is a question of, can you use this fund to do this type of work? And the answer, you're hearing from administration, is you can. Then you have a choice. Do you want to use this fund in this? And you will see in the packet that there are several motions that you may consider. Are there additional questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Sheldon, do you recall the original proj, I want to go back to actually the original. When we removed the trees, I know that we did some stormwater work in there, and we also rebuilt the sidewalks. There were some, it wasn't just cosmetic, there was, there was functionality, I think, especially of stormwater. And, and why were the trees removed, then?
At the time, they were removed because they were, one, not as healthy as what they should be, and, two, sidewalk work was going out past where the tree wells were, and with changes of grade and things like that, the trees had to be removed as well. The primary aspect of that project was driven by stormwater and ponding that was happening on Front Street, on the roadway itself. And to accommodate the drainage, we had to move the sidewalk out, make it larger. But in consultation with the Parks Department, their recommendation was to remove the trees.
Okay. So our original reason to remove the trees, in essence, is, could be similar, why, a similar reason for why any development or redevelopment to trees and not maybe have the means to then replace them, and they would add into the fund. And I think that that's the sense of, you know, what, where that questioning comes from, is, is if we have a standard for developers under those circumstances, not retain, be able to retain, and I don't know if we meet that criteria, then, then they pay into that fund, and I understand that. It is an interesting question to me as well, of why, you know, is that, is there some reason, if this could be assessed that same way, you know, why, why wouldn't we pay into that same fund if we can't? And I, and so, I don't know if you're prepared to ask that, but, and anyway, I already know what direction I'm going to go tonight, but this is a question I'd like to understand the answer to.
I have to look into that further.
Sheldon, can you speak up a little?
I don't have an answer to that question right here.
Okay. So may not have it tonight. Administrator Moon, did you want to add anything?
No, other than, we understand that's, that's more of a policy question, and wasn't the one that was to be deliberated tonight. We can have other conversations about that.
That's fine, thank you.
And Deputy Counsel President Patisse?
Thank you for the presentation, Sheldon. Could you just tell me a little bit more about the tree choice, the trees that are going in? You mentioned that the trees before were not completely healthy, so could you speak to choice of trees that are?
I think I'm going to defer to Christopher on that.
The streetscape plan, as part of that review and adoption process, they specified the trees that their landscape architect that worked on the plan suggested for the street trees, and we're going, we're going along with that plan.
So not the same kind of trees that we had?
Were they before? No, no, I think they're different.
And there, were there five trees that were removed, being replaced by five trees? So it's?
The number is the same within this area that was removed and replaced.
Additional questions? Councilmember Walsh?
Do we know what the City Tree Fund balance is right now?
It's estimated to be around $100,000.
And have there been any recent usages on that? I'm trying to get a sense of how much that fund varies or is used.
It hasn't been used much at all.
And I believe we're going to be looking at tree canopy or something in the coming year where that may be part of it?
I can let City Administrator Moon provide more information on that.
Sure. This year's work program does include a few objectives around trees, including assessment of the tree canopy. And I think ultimately, as we get the results of those studies, we can have a conversation about then, how do we want to proceed with any recommendations? There could be varied recommendations, but one of those might be, you should invest more in your tree canopy, for example, and if that's the case, then this would be a logical source.
This came out of Infrastructure, looking for someone to make a motion. Do I have any takers to make a motion? Councilmember Hunt?
I will. I'm moving to Director of Finance Director to include a $156,370 fund transfer from the general fund, fund balance, to the street capital fund for a total transfer of $156,370 in a thousand dollars, in a subsequent 2019 budget amendment to provide revenue for Phase One of the Front Street Streetscape between Sunset Way and Northeast Alder Project, and to authorize the administration to enter into a construction contract for the Front Street Streetscape Project between Sunset and Alder Phase One Project, not to exceed $156,370.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Sir, I am moving the version of the motion that uses the general fund, primarily because I think we have a number of challenges with, with tree canopy and with trees of various health, varying health in the city in other locations, and I do believe that my, my understanding of the intent of having a tree mitigation fund is really to improve and to strengthen our, our trees on public properties in the city. And so I think that replacing trees that the city removed, I don't know that that, in my opinion, meets, meets the intent. I do understand that legally it is possible, but at the same time, I think that that fund should be for, for new trees or for improving the health of trees elsewhere in the city, and not because we removed trees and that we're just going to be putting them back and then taking from the tree mitigation funds to do so. So that's the, that's the reason why I made the motion that draws from the general fund. And then, I do, I appreciate the new information about the businesses. I have a remaining concern, which is about the screens, and my concern is that the street has changed over time since the plan was adopted, and one of the changes has been the activation of one of the alleys that is screened by a new side business. And so I think if we want to have a pedestrian-friendly, interesting street where you have businesses that are dependent on walk, walk-up traffic and those sorts of things, we want to potentially have visibility of those businesses. And I don't know that screening in that case, I can see screening parking in an alley, but in this case, we are actually screening a side business, and I think in this case, one of, one of the businesses that has made effort to be visible and to actually activate that side of the, of the building. So when I look at the objectives for doing the streetscape in terms of improving the pedestrian experience, et cetera, I don't know that that, that particular screen meets those criteria, and so I would like to make an amendment.
If I could get you to hold on for one second, Councilmember Hunt. City Administrator Moon?
Just a point, point of reference, and I'm not sure this is the exact moment. I, I would just like to make sure that council also understands there was a lot of public input on this project, and I'd just ask you to consider the amount of that public input that went into the concept plan, and that the public art features, the screening, and those being one and the same in, in this case, were elements that did get a lot of input and feedback and resonated with community members, and we showed a bunch of different models, concepts, and this was one of the elements that scored highly in, in the feedback that we received. I do believe, and if we haven't expressed it with great confidence, I do believe that we can work with businesses and community members and the Arts Commission to design something that meets, meets all the objectives, but still attends to the fact that there, there are businesses on those alleyways and that they have a desire for visibility. In particular, some of those businesses have, because they're not located on the frontage, they have signage that's elevated, it's at the eaves level, and I don't expect the screens to be that high. We're, we're just trying to. they have signage that's elevated, it's at the eaves level, and I don't expect the screens to be that high. We're, we're just trying to cover, you know, passenger car type height, and so I want to make sure that that's understood, that that's kind of the objective and that's kind of the visual that you should have in your head as you're considering what the screens might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to propose an amendment for this evening?
I move to amend AB 7715, Front Street Streetscape, Phase One Project, to remove the decorative screens component and associated funding and to include them as a discussion item with additional information in a subsequent phase of the streetscape project.
Did you, do you have that? Yeah, I have to reread it. Is there a second first, to remove the decorative screens from the landscape design?
I'm, I have a question.
You can, I think, does he have to second it in order to have a discussion, or can he ask a question?
If you want to discuss the amendment, then, further than there would be...
How about a point of order, then?
Point of order.
I think these are two separate topics and not, should not be lumped together, and would be better for the business of the council to handle them independently. One is about funding of the project and one is about the content of the project.
So I'm looking at City Administrator Moon. The content of the project was approved when the landscape plan was approved, landscape concept plan, so that is not the question before you tonight, whether or not you want to amend the plan. That may be a question that you have, but it's not the one in front of you tonight. The one in front of you tonight is to approve the funding.
So, and in, sure, in the motion, it's about funding, it's removing the funding for that portion.
I'll second it, so that at least Councilmember Hunt can express her...
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, my, my big concern is, yes, I do believe there was a lot of community engagement. I looked back at the last times when this came forward, the picture that I saw was the Edward Jones Alley and the decorative screen that was there, and in that case, it is alley that doesn't have a side business. I think that because this plan has been in the works for a while, the streetscape has changed, and so the community engagement is perhaps outdated, and so I would like to see a discussion for making sure that this is still the, the way to activate the street when, or to make a pedestrian-friendly experience, when in this case, it seems like there is already a pedestrian-friendly experience there, that I do not see the benefit of having screens, and I also don't see the benefit of putting money towards a screen if it's gonna be blocking and activated in side business.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
Question for staff. Explain for me what's there now in this, but Councilmember Hunt's referring specifically to one of the screens per the plan. I do recall everything, how the process was explained earlier. I do recall, I know that it had to do with creating kind of a visual screen decorative, that's why the arts commission is involved, to, to block just a clear line of sight to cars, at least from certain directions. So I'm curious about what's, what's there now, and I also want to hear about, a little bit more about a reference you made earlier about a process as you currently intend to go through to, to make a choice on whatever, whatever type of treatment is put there.
So right now, so here's Edward Jones, and then here is the crawl bar and the side tenant space, which is a new tenant space just in the last year or so, is where Al's folly is. This is completely open from Front Street to the, you know, there's no kind of walls or screens or any, anything that, that blocks visibility of the angled parking here and the angled parking here. And so the intent is to help screen the vehicles. Again, the plan did a couple of things. It talked about an eight-foot height for those screens. We all agree that, that they do not need to be that tall, as Emily mentioned, just tall enough to screen a vehicle. And then they also showed the, the screen and that the picture that's in the, the plan does show going like all the way to the wall here. And we have since agreed that maintaining the walkway along the side of this building, similar to maintaining the walkway that's used to access the new tenant space here, so that the screens would be not as long or as tall as basically what was shown in the plan.
What's there now? Is there parking there now?
There's, yeah, there's, yeah, there's angled parking at, at both of those.
Okay, so...
And that's, that's what is, will be screened with the, with the screens.
Okay, I, what I'm seeking clarification on is, because I don't, I'm, I'm not familiar with the details that you're referring to, and it'd be easy to assume that there is no parking there, Mar, there's now, there's just a side business, but I'm hearing that it's, there's, these are still spaces that are used for parking, and the intent of this would be to screen that parking, and maybe there's a block of some business that there as well. Okay, so there's that, and then what's the process you're gonna go through to make a selection?
Well, we've been talking to Amy Dukes, and she's agreed that going through the Arts Commission review process and selection would be, would be appropriate, because we, we didn't want to just buy us out of a catalog screen. We want to make it art, and we want to use local artists to, to create them, and by doing that, I think we will have a little more say on what that looks like exactly.
So with that approach, then maybe local stakeholders and business owners will be involved, but it all depends on how that process unfolds.
We will involve them.
Additional questions? Or discussion? Thoughts you want to share? Councilmember Ray?
I think we had a process we went through to, you know, to, to set this up and to define this, and it just feels very inappropriate for me, to me, to be using the funding discussion to be talking about making design element changes. It just seems like the, the wrong place and the wrong time and the wrong vehicle.
Okay. Councilmember Goodman?
I, um, we have a, we have a plan, and I do agree with Councilmember Hunt that there could be some, that there are changes based on a new tenant, and that, that needs to be kept in mind. It, I, we, I, I think we have to allow the administration to implement the plans that we have adopted, and if the screen goes up and blocks a business, then we're gonna hear about it, and I would be very unhappy given the conversation, but I would be willing to allow the administration to implement the plans and take into consideration what you've heard from us and what you've heard from businesses.
Additional comments? Councilmember Walsh, followed by Councilmember Winterstein?
I very much appreciate hearing about this business. Having been on PPC when we were reviewing the screens, those, they're beautiful, and I love the addition to it, but not at something that's going to hurt a business. So I would very much encourage the city to work with those businesses, consider a half height, something that's going to add to the beauty and not hurt a business. I do think that I will probably put my trust in the city to do that and take this out of the funding conversation.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. It's my preference that the individuals involved with the process going forward has already envisioned. I would fully expect that they will use good judgment and be responsive to and sensitive to these, any issues that could arise. I've already, there's already been some engagement, you've demonstrated some knowledge, I know some of the people that are gonna be involved, I know about the kind of work they've done in the past and the engagement that they've exercised in the past, so rather than use a legislative process to perhaps tweak part of this design, I would like it to go through the process as currently envisioned, so I'm not gonna support the amendment.
I've heard from five of you. Council, Deputy Counsel President Patisse?
So I, I appreciate all the thought behind this. I think with the public process that we've had, especially around the screens, and I just feel comfortable with the administration and the Arts Commission working with the groups and the business owners and making the right decisions, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Council President Mertz, did you want to weigh in on the discussion?
Nope.
Okay, just checking. I have a little difficulty reading the motion. Is it okay if I just sort of let Vicky read the motion?
There was amendment to...
The amendment, sorry?
That is in front of you. You could ask for...
Councilmember Hunt, could you repeat the amendment before I call for the vote?
So move to amend AB 7715, Front Street Streetscape, Phase One Project, to remove the decorative screens component and associated funding, and to include them as a discussion item with additional information in a subsequent phase of the streetscape project.
Thank you. The amendment has been moved and seconded and discussed. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The amendment fails. One in favor, six opposed. We're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion of the main motion? Councilmember Winterstein?
I'm glad to see this coming forward. It was the will of the council when we saw in our CIP how it really was a big block of work further out in the future and, and not that long ago. We said, we've got to do something, let's at least work on the trees. And that was, a, a lot of us felt that loss in many different ways, not just visually, but it kind of, you're striking at the real core part of Izakua's identity. So I'm glad that we, that we have entertained this, this, this special project, this carve-out, and the council did ask for this this way. It wasn't, we broke it out, we set aside some money. I'm glad to see this going forward, it, but it's just a small step, or at least it may go forward, it's just a small step, and I'm looking, I, I think it'll be, create quite a lot of a response. People will respond to this if we do this, and I, so I'm glad that we're taking this earlier step than it was originally envisioned. I'm gonna support this, and excited about this first step.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Ray, and then Councilmember Hunt?
So I believe, and I think staff would concur, that using the tree mitigation fund is an appropriate thing, funding vehicle for this particular undertaking. The tree mitigation fund is far more restricted than the general fund, so I don't support the, the motion to fund this completely out of general fund when the tree mitigation fund is a legitimate complement to general fund dollars. That doesn't mean we can't use general fund dollars down the road to, to increase our tree canopy, but there are things that we can't do with the tree mitigation fund, and so by not taking advantage of this, we are giving away flexibility that we could use down the road. So I cannot support the notion of using simply general fund for this initiative when tree fund is, is a legitimate complement to general fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Hunt, are you next? Yes.
So thank you again for all the information about the outreach to the businesses. I would, just to, I, I do believe that there is a way to do the watering of the plants, the maintenance of the streetscape, the decorative screens, the furniture in a way that complements the businesses, so I just would like to see continued outreach and also continued public engagement, because this is a street with really high visibility, as you know, and changes will be noticed and potentially appreciated a great deal by the public, so I'm looking forward to that, and I think there are lots of different ways to activate and increase the pedestrian experience along the street, and so I, I do have confidence in the city that, that these changes will be made in a way that improves the pedestrian experience and meets the other goals of the streetscape. I, I still, as far as the funding, which is what we're, we're discussing, I still think that, I, I think the tree fund is more restricted, and in my opinion, using the tree funds for improving rather than to just simply replace trees that were removed is a, is a more appropriate use of that tree fund. It's also, I think, a fairly small portion of the overall funding for the trees, for the streetscape, which is possible to be funded by that, and so I, I would argue, I think, that the tree fund could be used elsewhere to improve rather than to simply replace what has been removed by the city and keep us at, at par with our trees. So I, I would still stand by using the general fund for the funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Goodman?
I agree with Councilmember Hunt regarding the use of the tree fund. I think this needs to be paid for out of the general fund.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein, before I come back to you, I wanted to see if Walsh or Patisse or Mertz would like to weigh in, otherwise I will come back to Councilmember Winterstein. Council President Mertz?
So I'm a tad bit confused. Councilmember Ray, if we, so you, you suggested you're not in favor of this motion, so does that mean a amendment, or what, if we, if we fail this?
I, I'm more favorable of the alternative motion, which splits the funding from the tree fund and the general fund instead of solely general fund.
So why haven't you moved that?
Because we have an active motion on the table.
So it wouldn't be, I see, you weigh, got it. Not as an amendment, but, okay. Because I also feel that we are at a financial point where every dollar in the general fund is, 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 there's a lot of heavy lifts to come out of the general fund, and if we can spread some of that heavy lifting out, I think that the rest of our, every dollar we can do will help us in the rest of the year in the tough choices in front of us.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Patisse, and then Winterstein?
So I, I agree with Council President Mertz. I, I do feel that we need to really focus on every dollar that's coming from the general fund, but I completely understand the, the amendment and thinking about what we, what we have in the future. I understand that's $30,000. It sounds like we have $100,000 in, in that account, which, and I do know we've got everything coming up with the tree canopy, so I would, I would be supportive of a potential upcoming motion where we're using the general fund and the tree mitigation fund.
Councilmember Walsh, did you get a chance to weigh in? Do you want to weigh in? You do not have to.
I'm still considering.
Okay. Councilmember Winterstein, you want to add some thoughts?
Different take, thank you, on the use of the tree fund. I think general fund is appropriate. I would, we haven't asked the question of ourselves at a policy level, do, should, and, and I'm, it's, I'm not entirely clear that this project that, that originally moved the trees is similar enough to a type of project that some other developer would do that, that, and would then trigger them having to give to the tree fund because we're doing to retention. But I would rather us, as a city, address that as a policy question, like, should we hold ourselves up to that same criteria as our developers, and address that as a, as a policy question, and, and not set a precedent for that before we have this conversation. So let's use the general fund money and then going forward, give ourselves more clarity on when our project should contribute or not, therefore, because I do agree, it's, the fund, the tree fund idea of getting, we had to, the tree coverage canopy couldn't be retained, let's make sure that that reemerges somewhere else on public land, that's the intent of that, and that, and that's, that's a nice, a nice intent, but we want to look at when we remove the, or reduce the canopy, you know, should that obligation be for us as well? So I think taking it out of that fund today would set a precedent, and I'd rather have the conversation about that policy before we do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
So code 18 dot 12 dot 180 talks about the city tree fund, and it said, "The tree fund is created and shall be administered by finance. All funds, it has two purposes. All funds received from civil penalties resulting from violations shall be deposited in the fund and shall be used only for the purpose of paying all or part of the cost and expense of enforcing and implementing this chapter, and secondarily, and may be used for the purpose of acquiring, maintaining, and preserving wooded areas, for planting So I would say that the intent of the tree fund is for the primary purpose of the cost and expense of enforcing and implementing the chapter, which is about landscape and trees, and not for the city to use to just simply replace trees. And if we were going to improve the conditions, then that's one thing. But I still agree with Councilmember Hunt that I don't think that that is an appropriate use of the city tree fund for this project.
Any other final comments? Councilmember Ray?
So can I get a little clarification from either the city attorney or city staff on their interpretation of the tree fund? Because what I heard from Councilmember Goodman and what I think I heard earlier don't comport, and I would like, and I think that is a really significant question. If what we're proposing is inconsistent with the ordinance, then that's one thing. And if it's not, then that's another thing.
Sure, and I can give that to City Administrator Moon to start.
Well, I was just going to clarify. I think Councilmember Goodman's point was there's a primary purpose, and then there's an allowable range. And the way that I answered that question earlier is that it's an allowable use.
Any other discussion or questions before I call for the vote? Or final comments? Okay. The motion in front of you is to direct the Finance Director to include a $156,370 fund transfer from the general fund balance to the Street Capital Fund for a total transfer of $156,370 in a subsequent 2019 budget amendment to provide revenue for Phase One of the Front Street Streetscape between Sunset Way and Northeast Alder Project, and authorize the administration to enter into a construction contract for the Front Street Streetscape Project between Sunset and Alder Phase One Project, not to exceed $156,370. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and raise your hands. Thank you. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The vote is for, the vote passes and is four in favor with three opposed. I want to thank you for your thoughtful deliberation. One thing that's been really important to me is that when you have options, we present all your options. Sometimes that generates a lot of conversation and dialogue, but I think that's really good. So thank you for that. That was very thoughtful. The next item on the agenda this evening is Good of the Order, and we'll start first with the Council President Mertz, who will be talking about ID 0404, which is Council Appointments for 2019.
Certainly. And before I start that, I just want to say how refreshing it is to be able to have a four-three vote after five or six weeks without. That's a very good feeling. So we did finish 2019 council appointments for the year. For Infrastructure Committee, Councilmember Winterstein will be chairing. Councilmembers Goodman and Walsh will also be members. Sheldon Lynn will be staff liaison. Landon Shore, Councilmember Hunt is going to be chairing. And Councilmembers Goodman and Mertz will be on as members. And then Director Niven is our staff liaison. And then Services and Safety, Councilmember Ray continues as chair. And then Councilmembers, Council Deputy President Batiste and Councilmember Walsh will also be on that committee, and Chief Beerbaum is liaison, if I didn't say that already. So I want to thank Directors Lynn and Niven and Chief Beerbaum for continuing their liaison roles. It's really important to the proper functioning of those committees. And I'll also mention the Ad Hoc Long-Term Financial Committee, which is organized a little bit differently. Councilmembers Ray and Winterstein and myself will be on that, along with City Administrator Moon, Interim Finance Director Goldberg, and our TBD Deputy City Administrator. And then last but not least, I just want to mention other regional appointments. Councilmember Hunt is going to be doing Cascade Water Alliance and Wyra Eight. Councilmembers Goodman and Ray are going to continue their excellent work on Eastside Fire and Rescue. Council Deputy President Batiste is going to continue on Eastside Human Services Forum. Councilmember Winterstein is going to continue as chamber liaison. And Councilmember Goodman is going to be stepping forward to do Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which we appreciate. And I'm going to stay as primary, and Councilmember Ray is as alternate for the Sound Cities Association pick that I love so much. So with that.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on appointments.
And thank you, everyone, for your willingness and enthusiasm, both to be part of these various organizations and for your flexibility as we came up with the appointments, to make sure that, I think every single person got, if they had something as a one or a two, everybody who's in a position, somebody had, that person had a one or a two for that position. So we have the right people in the right places. So thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Do any other council members have something for Good of the Order before I move into upcoming council meetings? Councilmember Ray?
I just wanted to recognize Public Works Operations and the ISQOP Police Department for their excellent work over the last couple of days in inclement weather. And it is very satisfying to hear the rumble of the snowplows coming down your street, and you recognize that you might just be able to get out and get to the grocery store. So thank you to all who work so hard and all the long hours, and it's appreciated by the people of the community.
Thank you. They are on 12-hour shifts now, 24 hours a day, and so it will be passed on your words of appreciation. Thank you very much. Upcoming council meetings. On February 11th, there is a council work session, and the potential agenda items include the citywide strategic plan. On February 9th, there is a regular council meeting, and potential agenda items include the updated water system plan adoption and a discussion on regional transportation funding. Our last item under, on our agenda this evening is the executive session, yet another executive session. As earlier announced, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. And I'm also going to add, it was missing in my earlier comments, to discuss collective bargaining under RCW 42.30.140 per N4. This item is expected to take 30 minutes. Action may follow in open session. We will now recess at 10:04.